Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, April 12th, 2021, City of Blue Springs Planning Commission meeting to order. At this time, I will say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now I'd like to ask Karen Fandora, Commission Liaison, to call the roll.
Okay, thank you. Planning Commissioner Byron Kradoff.
Commissioner Byron Kradoff here.
Commissioner Jacob Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt here.
Commissioner Lynn Banks.
Commissioner Lynn Banks here.
Commissioner Ken Phillips.
Commissioner Ken Phillips here.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel here.
Commissioner Travis Graham.
Commissioner Travis Graham, President.
Commissioner Susan Stokumberry. Commissioner Susan Stokumberry. Commissioner Tom Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr here.
Commissioner Ashley Hoes. Commissioner Lakeisha Veal are both absent. And Chair Chad Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson here.
Okay. Also this evening, we have...
Are they available online, live?
Also this evening, we have Mike Mallon, Director of Community Development, Matt Wright, Assistant Director of Community Development, Adam Hilgadick, City Engineer, Jackie Summer, City Attorney, Jerry Kahler, Councilmember District One, Mayor Pro Tem, Jim Leacock, Public Sonographer.
All right, thank you Karen. And if those on the line, if you could please mute your phone or mics, we would appreciate it. Thank you. All right, so we have some public hearings this evening, so I'm going to read through the public hearing procedures. I'm going to open the public hearing and call for exhibits from the City Attorney. We're going to ask for the staff presentation and comments. We're going to ask if the applicant would like to make a presentation. We're going to ask for witnesses in favor of the petition to speak, and then witnesses opposed of the petition to speak. And I would ask if there's multiple speakers that they limited to the items that haven't been said up to this point. Then we'll bring it back for questions and discussion, and then we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion. The items on the agenda tonight are called Order and Consent Agenda, the Public Hearing Vacation VAC 0321-7679 Chapman Ridge First Platte Lots Two and Four. Item Three is Public Hearing Rezoning RZ 0221-7659 Proverbs Estates. Item Four is Public Hearing Plan Development Concept Plan PDC 0221-7661 Proverbs Estates. Item Five is Public Hearing Rezoning RZ 0321-7694 Take Five Oil Change. Item Six, Public Hearing Conditional Use Permit CUP 0321-7693 Take Five Oil Change. Item Seven is Preliminary Platte PP 0221-7660 Proverbs Estates. Item Eight, Site Plan Design Review SPDR 0321-7695 Take Five Oil Change. Item Nine is a Master Alternative Sign Plan ASP 0321-7697 Amazon DCM Four Delivery Center. Item Ten is Other Business, and Eleven is Agreement. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, is the meeting minutes for March 22nd, 2021, and I would ask for a motion at this time on the Consent Agenda. Commissioner Peel.
Thank you Chair. I move that the meeting minutes from March 22nd of the Planning Commission be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you Commissioner Peel, and Commissioner Honeycutt, recognize you next.
Commissioner Honeycutt, I second that.
All right, we have motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Byron Kradoff.
Commissioner Byron Kradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Travis Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Tom Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
And Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
That motion is carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item Two is a public hearing vacation for Chapman Ridge First Platte Lots Two and Four. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and we'll open the public hearing for the vacation and call for exhibits from the City Attorney Jackie Summer.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit One, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on March 27, 2021. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And Eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Wright, I think you'll be presenting for the city.
Yep, thank you Chair Sanderson and Commissioners. Before we begin this evening is a request to vacate a portion of a 15-foot utility easement, which is in the proposed Chapman Ridge Second Subdivision, which is located west of Chapman Ridge Drive and north of Colburn Road. The request covers a 90-foot-long portion of the existing 15-foot utility easement. The existing utility easement interferes with the building layout that was approved with the concept plan for Chapman Ridge, which is a proposed two-family development on lots Two and Four of Chapman Ridge First Platte. All utility companies have consented to the request and do not currently have any utilities within the easement. Future utility easement is proposed to be platted with the final platte for Chapman Ridge Second Platte as crosshatched just to the north of the area that's proposed to be vacated. Staff does recommend approval of this vacation request with three conditions in the staff report, and I will be happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Thank you Mr. Wright. Are there any questions from the Commissioners for staff? All right, seeing none, I would ask if the applicant would like to present anything or make any additional comments. If you do, you'll have to state your name and be sworn in, and give your address as well.
Dan Foster with Schlegel, 14920 West 107th Street on exit Kansas. Add no further comments. Agree to stipulations.
Can we go ahead and have him sworn in, please?
Sure.
Yes, raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth, above you God?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions from the Commissioners for this applicant? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and move to asking for any witnesses in favor of this application. Okay, I'll ask for witnesses opposed to this application. Okay, any final questions or comments from the Commissioners? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll call for, or ask for a motion for this vacation. Commissioner Peel.
Yes, thank you Chair. I move that the vacation VAC 0321-7679 for Chapman Ridge First Platte Lots Two and Four with the three conditions be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you Commissioner Peel. I'll now recognize Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, I second that.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Lynn Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Richard Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Kradoff.
Commissioner Kradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
And Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously.
All right, vacation will be heard by the City Council their Monday, April 19th, 2021 meeting at 6:00 PM. This is all the testimony to be heard on this item at this time, and if you'd like to leave the meeting, please do so now. Thank you very much. All right, the next items on the agenda is Item Three, the rezoning. Items Four, Plan Development Concept Plan. Item Seven, Preliminary Platte for Proverbs Estates. We'll hear all the items together and then vote on them individually. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for the rezoning and Plan Development Concept Plan, and call for exhibits from our City Attorney Jackie Summer.
Mr. Chairman, for RZ 0221-7659, I offer the following exhibits into the record. One, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 20, 2021, and March 6, 2021. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And Eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. And for PDC 0221-7661, I offer the following exhibits into the record. One, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on February 20, 2021, and March 6, 2021. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And Eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Wright, looks like you'll be presenting this one as well.
Yep, thank you Chair Sanderson and Commissioners. Before we begin this evening, our request for rezoning a PD concept plan and a preliminary plat for the proposed Proverbs Estates Development. The rezoning and the concept plan cover 20.3 acres east of Shroud Road, which is approximately 2,000 feet south of Wyatt Road. That is the area outlined on the screen. And then for the preliminary plat, it covers a much larger area covering 96.5 acres, which includes the PD concept plan area on the west portion of this property, and then the remaining 76 acres to the east and northeast of that, south of Wyatt and west of Litchford Road. The first request this evening is to rezone the west 20.3 acres off of Shroud Road from AG County Agriculture to SF 12 PD, which is a large lot, single family with a planned development. The existing zoning is the former county zoning district designation from when the property was annexed into the city in 2003. A rezoning is required to the appropriate city zoning district in conjunction with approvals of development plans or preliminary plats. Based on proposed lot sizes, under the concept plan, the SF 12 zoning district is the most appropriate, as most lots fit within the detached house, large lot development standards. The second request is for a Plan Development Concept Plan for Proverbs Estates, which is a proposed 23-lot, single-family development on the 20.3-acre property. Access to the site will be provided from Shroud Road to the west. This is the only point of access for the development proposed at this time, although the concept plan does have, at the end of Proverbs Boulevard, here on the east property line, a potential future entryway, and then also on the north property line at the northeast corner of the property, a third point of potential access by an extension of Proverbs Drive. This point of access also would provide, this northeast corner does provide access as well to an existing gravel drive that runs and accesses the current sewer lift station, which will remain and need to remain accessible for this development. All streets that are shown on the layout and are proposed to be private streets, which will be required to be built to city standards for residential streets, however, will be maintained privately by either a homeowners association or some other type of property maintenance association. City residential street standards include sidewalks, in which Proverbs Boulevard will be classified as a minor collector's street, which requires five-foot sidewalks on both sides. There would also be Shroud Road improvements along the frontage, which would also include a five-foot sidewalk. Four-foot sidewalks are required on all other local streets in the subdivision. The proposed development is supposed to be completed over three phases, with the first phase being in kind of the pinkish-orange color, which is predominantly for Lot One, and the associated street improvements to and from Lot One from Shroud Road. That first phase must be, all street improvements and other infrastructure improvements must be completed prior to the approval of a final plat for Lot One, as well as the underlying tracks for the private streets. And that final plat must be approved and recorded prior to the issuance of a building permit for Lot One. The second phase includes all of the lots and tracks that are in green, which is a majority of the remaining lots to be developed. And then the blue up at the northeast corner of the development would be Phase Three, which would finish the final three lots, as well as a neighborhood community center and a playground area. All lots, as I mentioned, are classified as a detached house, large lot building type, which includes the development standards for that building type are on page nine of the staff report. This does require lot widths ranging from 100 feet to 150 feet, lot sizes ranging from 1,200 square feet up to an acre. Front corner side and rear setbacks are 30 feet, and then a 15-foot interior side setback, which is the side setback that is not on a corner lot. As part of the PD, the applicant is requesting a modification to increase the maximum lot frontages from 150 feet to 235 feet, and also to allow all of the lot frontages to be calculated using the private street network. As under the code, it does specifically refer to lot frontages being on a public street, therefore the private street would be basically treated the same as a public street in this case. So whatever the width of that lot along that track that has the private street will be considered a lot frontage. Additional modifications requested under this PD include an increase in the maximum block length and block size due to the usage of private streets, which require this entire development to be treated as one block. The SF 12 zoning district requires a minimum 10% of the site to be developed and dedicated as common open space. The site meets that requirement by providing 13.5% of the site as open space, or a total of 2.75 acres. This open space does include three pocket parks, including two playgrounds that are proposed, as well as a detention pond area that will include a walking trail around it. There's also enhanced subdivision entries with an access gate and other landscaping features adjacent to that, and then also a community center along the north property line. As part of the plan development, the applicant is requesting to be able to count the community center as part of the open space, which staff believes is appropriate. That is something that has been calculated and included as the open space in other developments throughout the city. Private streets are within a tract as well, but have not been counted towards that minimum open space requirement. The only landscaping buffering required for this development is along Shroud Road, which is classified as a major collector, which requires a seven-foot landscape buffer. No additional buffering is required, as all adjacent properties are zoned either for agriculture or other single-family purposes, and therefore whenever there's single-family against other single-family uses or agriculture uses, there are no buffering requirements. Included in the packet are conceptual renderings or images of the proposed houses for this development. The image on the screen is the proposed house that would be on Lot One, which is over 4,000 square feet, and then some additional building elevations and renderings have been provided for other homes throughout the subdivision, which do show a variety of architectural design styles and materials being utilized throughout the subdivision on largely higher-end estate homes, estate-style homes. Based on the size of the adjacent houses and the minimum housing classifications provided in the Unified Development Code, the minimum classification is proposed to be 2,600 square feet for each lot. That is the highest minimum classification that is accommodated under the code. Additional design details for houses, the entryway into the subdivision, amenities and landscaping are required to be provided as part of the PD final plan. The final request is for a preliminary plat for Proverbs Estates. This is a, the preliminary plat for the 20.3 acres that is part of the concept plan has been covered under the concept plan. The remaining 76 acres to the east and northeast of that is being platted as a tract, because currently the entire 96 acres is part of a single parcel, and so some sort of a preliminary plat or some other type of plating process is required to be able to legally subdivide the 20 acres off from the remaining 76 acres prior to the sale or transfer of property. And so this is the process, and the reason why it is being platted as a tract is it does not allow any development or further subdivision of the 76 acres without going through the rezoning development plan and further amending the preliminary plat or plating process. So this does allow this tract, what's being labeled as Tract H, to remain undeveloped without any kind of rezoning or development plan attached to it, and at a later date, once the development plan is proposed for it, we would then review public improvements and the rezoning and general development plan or concept plan processes for that property at a later date. Staff reviewed the rezoning request under the nine review criteria that begins on page four of the staff report, and does find that the rezoning request is consistent with the 2014 Comprehensive Plan's designation of this property as a neighborhood, and that the proposed rezoning complements existing estate homes to the south along Shroud Road. Staff reviewed the PD concept plan request under the five review criteria that begins on page 10 of the staff report, and finds that the concept plan generally meets the review criteria by providing a unique housing type and amenities for the subdivision. However, staff has also noted concerns specifically related to the private street network, which will make it more difficult to develop properties to the east. Access to Shroud Road is the most direct point of access for the additional land to the east due to the steep topography and floodplain further east closer to Litchford Road. The private streets will make adjacent property more difficult to develop, both physically and financially, due to the additional infrastructure, including potential bridge improvements across the floodplain to access those properties. Based on staff's review of the applications and associated plan, as well as the review criteria for each application type, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning, approval of the concept plan with four conditions, and approval of the preliminary plat with five conditions, and I will be happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Thank you Mr. Wright. Before I ask for questions from the Commissioners, if I could have, if you're on your phone, if you could mute, that would be appreciated.
Last four digits, 3802. Please mute your device by clicking the mute function on your cell phone or star six.
Thank you Karen. All right, any questions for staff by the Commissioners?
Commissioner Kradoff requests to speak.
Commissioner Kradoff.
I want to make a record that I received consulting services for digital marketing in 2020 from Third Wave Marketing, which is associated with Mr. Yancy. The services I received were not related to this development or any type of real estate use. My dealings with the subsidiary will not influence my decision-making in this public hearing or in any matter involving Proverbs Holding. I will remain unbiased.
All right, thank you Mr. Kradoff. Any other questions by the Commissioners for staff at this time? Okay. All right, I would ask if the applicant would like to make a presentation. You'll need to be sworn in and then state your name and address, please.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth, above you God?
I do. This is Kenneth Yancy.
Okay, I need your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Kenneth Yancy. Address is 5008 Prospect, Suite 115, Kansas City, Missouri, 64130.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Yancy, would you like to make any additional presentation or add any additional comments?
I would not. I'd like to accept any conditions that apply to any of the paperwork we submitted. I think I heard maybe five associated with the concept plan, and maybe four for the preliminary. Is that right, or did I? I heard some conditions. I want to know what those conditions were.
Mr. Wright, would you mind walking through those conditions, just to refresh?
Yes, actually, let me bring them up on the screen. All right, so yes, there are four conditions for the PD concept plan. The first item is just a blanket condition that we include in all of our approvals, that unless specifically modified under the PD concept plan, all plans must meet all requirements of the Unified Development Code. And then we do state specifically which modifications are being proposed and approved as part of this concept plan, which include the increase in the maximum lot frontage, the increase in the maximum block length and size, allowing the lot width to be calculated using the private street network, and allowing the family center or neighborhood community center to count towards the open space requirement. We've also laid out what is required prior to final plat approval for each phase, and that prior to building permit issuance within each phase, the final plat must be recorded at the county, and then prior occupancy of each lot requires street trees landscaping and sidewalk must be installed. Then we have five conditions with the preliminary plat. Again, the approval is based on the representation of any drawings. Do not waive any requirements of the UDC, except as those that have been specifically modified by the concept plan. The preliminary plat approval is, by the Planning Commission, is contingent upon the approval of the concept plan by the City Council. The preliminary plat is not in effect until the concept plan is approved by the council, and is rescinded if the concept plan is denied by council. And then the same condition related to what is required to be completed prior to the final plat... And then, the same condition related to what is required to be completed prior to the final plat for each phase, the building permit requirement being linked to the final plat being approved and recorded at Jackson County. And then, again, the occupancy requirements, the items that must be completed before the house, before each house can be occupied.
Very good, very good. That's good.
Okay, it looks like Commissioner Phillips, you had a question for the applicant?
Yes, I did. This is Commissioner Phillips. I just would like the applicant to address why he decided to make these private streets and if he has any response to the staff comment about how that it would make this more difficult to develop to the east.
Okay, well, we have decided upon a private street because this is going to be an executive gated community. So, in terms of safety and security, we want the responsibility to take care of the road and make sure that the road is maintained. Now, we won't take care of any utility, but we will certainly take care of the roads. And in terms of the entry or making it more difficult to, you know, develop to the west or to the east, I think that can be addressed in a different discussion. But we do... We would like to have the first right of refusal on that additional 76 acres. So, there will... there's a thought, there's a plan behind the other 76 acres.
Okay, I was hoping that was going to be your answer. The reason I ask about the private street is in the past, we have had issues with the residents who live or people around a private street who come to the city wanting to know why the street hasn't been plowed, why it hasn't... why it hasn't been maintained, things like that. What kind of guarantees do we have that we're not going to have those issues?
Oh, that will be included in our home association covenant that Proverbs Holdings, Proverbs Estates would be fully responsible for maintaining the snow removal. In fact, we'll be cutting grass in that gated community. So, everything will look alike at all times. So, I don't think you'll hear any complaints about from the residents because they can go and play golf instead of cut grass.
Well, that won't be true when it's snowing, but...
Well, you can watch the cheese instead of shovel snow, how about that? I don't know. But yeah, I think at this point, we will definitely... We're looking forward to working very closely with the residents that are coming in. The marketing plan that we have proposed will have, again, executive-level residents. So, they're expecting a certain level of service. And so, we'll have all of that documented in our covenant. And we will always be looking for feedback from our residents. So, our job is to make everybody happy there, and we will, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Peel, will you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Mr. Yancy, I'd like a little background on your... Is this your first project for building this particular home, you know, home sites and things like that? Or do you have a large background in doing this development work?
Well, my background is real estate development, is also marketing. So, I have built over 25 houses in my lifetime. I'm only 56. I've built 25 houses. We never had the arrangement of a subdivision, if you will. But over the period of time, the last house I built was in Lions Gate, all the way to Jeff City. And we even rebuilt Ray Adams' house. Ray Adams built his first house in Raytown. We even acquired his house and totally redid it. And it was considered a rebuild because he was sitting there about five years untouched. So, yeah, we're very comfortable with our plan. We have a very detailed scope of work that will bring this project to fruition. We're very comfortable in that, very comfortable.
All right, also, Mr. Yancy, do you have a construction firm already identified for this project?
We do, we do.
And any... any name that you could place forth or not?
In terms of... we have several. So, what we do is we go through an evaluation process. Never wanted to make sure that they're comfortable with the City of Blue Springs codes, but also their experience with building gated communities. Because it's a difference, building a gated community than a subdivision. Because that gated community has to have some amenities that's around security. That's why people like gated community, because it gives them a sense of security with children and this other pandemic going on. We're gonna have some things, you know, that are what I call smart. For example, we're going to be taking pictures of license plates to get into the subdivision and bouncing that license plates off the DOJ and FBI databases. So, you will know who's in that subdivision if you live there. You will know who's in there and who shouldn't be in there. So, I hope that answered your question, but yeah, we're ready to go.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yancy, thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for the applicant by the commissioners at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Cradoff.
Commissioner Cradoff requests to speak.
Yes, please proceed.
Mr. Yancy, it appears there have been several attempts to develop in this area over the years, and you have chosen the perfect storm to meet your challenge along with several other developments not too far away from this area. I am impressed with your development proposal, and I understand these types of situations have high standards and must meet specific demands. In the same breath, it's refreshing to see the diversification of land ownership and different developmental groups emerge as our amazing city grows into its attempts to move forward in the 21st century. I viewed your profile, and being a former teacher, I was impressed with some of the projects you were associated with that reflect on Slide Number 98, received on Floor 121, such as the Kaufman Foundation and School Smart. I tip my hat to you for your contributions towards education. You appear to be quite the Renaissance man. But more importantly, I too believe the development proposal you've put forth will complement this existing adjacent homes in the area and increase the developability of land that may be... that may share a common boundary as well.
Well, thank you for those comments, Commissioner. But let me make it perfectly clear. I want to give two thumbs up for the staff at the City of Blue Springs. Starting with... I don't want to mention any names, I may miss someone, but the staff at the City of Blue Springs has been 100% supportive of this project. In fact, they were teachers in some cases in this project. So, we want to thank Adam and Mike and Nathan. Again, I know Mr. Nick, Jackie. We want to thank all of you all for really taking us by the hand in some cases and to really show us how this development works. So, we're comfortable, we've got some really, really good people on our team, and we're ready to do digging dirt, we're ready to, you know, build some houses.
Thank you as well.
Thank you, now for your comments.
Any other questions, comments from the commissioners for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Nancy. We will move to witnesses.
Yes, and we accept the conditions as mentioned, no problem.
Okay, thank you. And I would now turn to witnesses, ask for witnesses in favor of this application, if anybody would like to speak in favor of this application. All right, and I would ask for witnesses in opposition to this application. Okay. Karen, is there any speaker forms received on this one?
No, sir.
All right, very good. Any other final questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay. Hearing done, we will close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion on the rezoning.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cradoff requests to speak.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval for the rezoning of RZ-02-21-7659 of Proverbs Estates.
Thank you, Commissioner Cradoff, I now recognize Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, I second that.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Lynn Banks.
Commissioner Lynn Banks, aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, nay.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Okay, that motion is approved with seven to one.
All right, thank you. I would now ask... oh, I'm sorry. The rezoning will be heard by the city council at their Monday, April 19th, 2021 meeting at 6:00 PM. I would now ask for a motion on the Plan Development Concept Plan.
Commissioner Cradoff requests to speak.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the Plan Development Concept, PDC-02-21-761 with four conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Cradoff.
It's actually 7661. Yeah, four conditions.
All right, I have a motion for the Plan Development Concept Plan with the four conditions from Commissioner Cradoff. Recognize Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, I second that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second, this will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Ken Phillips.
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, nay. And that's due to the fact that the property located to the east and to the south will be isolated by this project, thank you.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Okay, that motion is carried, the vote from seven to one.
All right, the Plan Development Concept Plan will be heard by the city council at their Monday, April 19th, 2021 meeting at 6:00 PM. I would now ask for a motion on the preliminary plat.
Commissioner Cradoff requests to speak.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the preliminary plat, PP-02-21-7660 with five staff conditions.
All right, I have motion from Commissioner Cradoff, I now recognize Commissioner Banks.
Thank you, Chair, I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, this will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Jacob Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, nay, and the reasons as dictated before.
Commissioner Graham.
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff. Commissioner Cradoff.
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Chair Sanderson.
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Okay, motion carried, the vote from seven to one.
Chair Sanderson, this is Jackie Summer, City Attorney. I just wanted to note that on the roll call vote for the rezoning that Commissioner Honeycutt's name was not called.
Okay, all right. And he made a second on that motion, so Commissioner Honeycutt, you still agree on the second?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you, sir. So noted, still vote seven to one, please.
All right, thank you. All right, this is all a testimony to be heard on these items. If you would like to leave the meeting, please do so now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right, the next items on the agenda is Item 5, rezoning, and Item 6, conditional use permit, and Item 8, site plan design review for Take 5 oil change. We'll hear all the items together and then vote them individually. I'll now open the public hearing for the rezoning and conditional use permit and call for exhibits from the City Attorney, Jackie Summer.
On the RZ-03-21-7694, I offer the following exhibits into the record. One, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the Examiner on March 27, 2021. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference. And on the public hearing for CUP-03-21-7693, I offer the following exhibits into the record. One, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the Examiner on March 27, 2021. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Wright, looks like you're representing for the city on this one?
Yep, thank you, Chair Sanderson and commissioners. Before this evening, our request for a rezoning, conditional use permit, and a site plan design review for Take 5 oil change, which is a proposed vehicle repair limited use at 731 Southwest 40 Highway. The subject property, as shown on the screen, is located west of the recently completed Title Wave Auto Spa near the intersection of Southwest 7 and Southwest 40 highways. The first request before the commission this evening is a rezoning request to rezone the north 65 feet of the property from light industrial to general business, which would match the south 215 feet of this property. This request will bring the entire property under a single zoning district and will be in line with the, kind of, the north boundary of what has historically divided the commercial and industrial zoning to the north. The second request is for a conditional use permit for the property, which again, lies just west of the Title Wave Auto Spa. And actually, the entrance to Title Wave is on the north side of this property through a cross-access easement on this property. The vehicle repair, limited use allows a routine repair or maintenance services within enclosed buildings, such as the proposed use as an oil change business. As part of the CUP review, there are several special use standards that are included on the staff report on pages six through seven. Most of those special use standards are more specifically tailored towards gas or service stations. However, responses have still been provided. Hours of operation for this facility are proposed to be 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And there will not be any waiting rooms or other customer accommodations as the business model allows customers to remain in their cars during the duration of the service. Enhanced buffering and screening is not required for the site since it is surrounded by other commercial and industrial uses. There are no residential properties adjacent that would require any enhanced buffering for this site. The third and final request is for a site plan design review. Access to the site will be provided through internal access drives that connect to 40 Highway. The primary access drive aligns to the south with Sunset Plaza. And this access drive on the south side of the building is the access drive that runs into the QuickTrip parking lot. But again, the main point of access will be here to the north, just south of the car wash entrance. This will be both an entrance and exit for customers who are... who, for some reason, may not go through the oil change business. It is still strictly an exit, though, for the Title Wave car wash users as that is their only exit from that site. Customers will enter through the access drive and enter to the north side of the property and then turn south. um, and then turn south into one of the three, um, um, service bays, exit out the south side of the building, and then exit to the west into, back to the main access drive. Um, so it's really, um, kind of a, just one circle that they go through. Um, unless there, the, the spaces up here to the north may be utilized by employees, so they would, that's the purpose of the, um, two-way point of access, um, for that north drive. Um, all other access drives and public improvements have been, already been made in conjunction with the Title Wave Auto Spa, uh, that again surrounds pretty much the entire, um, portion of this property. Uh, the subject property is classified as a pad site building type, of which the site plan does meet all the development standards, um, as noted in the staff report. Uh, that includes setbacks, height, building coverage, parking locations, which must be behind, um, the front building line, as well as the building transparency on the front building elevations. Uh, the building will be approximately fourteen hundred square feet, um, most, most of which will be for the three service bays, um, that take up a majority of the east portion of the building. Uh, there is a small area for internal office, uh, restrooms, and, um, other accessory storage, um, for the service use. Uh, building elevations are shown on the screen. Um, the building materials for the site are, are for the building are predominantly Epi's or Stucco, and will have a stone veneer Wayne Scott. Um, four-sided architecture is provided through the, um, various materials, as well as a parapet banding, uh, across all four sides. There is also a variation in the parapet height with, uh, a corner element at the southeast corner of the building. Um, vehicle parking, um, has been met for the property, which does require, um, a minimum of one space, um, per employee on the largest shift, uh, which the applicant, um, projects will be five employees, and then a minimum of two spaces for each, uh, service bay, uh, which is three, uh, for a total of eleven spaces required on site. The site has provided twelve spaces, um, including an ADA space, um, on the, uh, to the side of the building. There are, um, eight spaces located up on the north property, near the north property line. The other three spaces the applicant is requesting to count as the, um, the queuing, um, spaces in front of the service base. Uh, staff does believe that this is an accept, that this is acceptable for this use as the proposed spaces do not interfere with the access drives, um, that would prohibit ingress and egress from the site. Um, the landscape plan is also, um, on the screen, uh, which the site is, um, has provided almost double the minimum plant units for the site, um, with significant buffering along forty highway, as well as the east buffer adjacent to Title Wave. Um, there are several existing trees, um, street trees out on forty highway that will be preserved, as well as some additional trees that were installed by Title Wave here on, to the east of the building. Uh, the five-foot sidewalk connection is provided, um, to the, um, to the site, which will actually tie into the Title Wave property sidewalk. And that way, there is one uniform connection to forty highway, rather than having multiple, um, crossings along this access drive. Um, and that would provide a, both an enhanced and a safer pedestrian experience along this, um, access drive. Um, prior to building permit issuance, a photometric plan must be provided that meets the outdoor lighting standards, and all signage must comply with the sign code and will be permitted administratively. Uh, staff recommends approval of the rezoning, approval of the C U P with two conditions, and approval of the site plan design review with four conditions, and I will stand for any questions from the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Are there any questions by the commissioners, uh, for staff at this time? Uh, Commissioner Peel?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Matt, um, that north flow from the car wash and also the people that are coming in there to go for the oil change, is there any isolation between the traffic that's going through there? Cause I see it as a possible accident just waiting to happen.
Um, yeah, they will be extending, uh, they will be widening this drive aisle right now. It's, it's only wide enough for an exit lane, but they will be adding to that to meet the minimum, um, drive widths. Uh, but it does, um, it does shrink down, leaving the Title Wave spot and there, um, leap for the Title Wave exit, and there will be signage throughout here that does direct traffic. Um, the, the, this drive up here is a, um, a dual entrance drive into, uh, a dual one-way entrance into the Title Wave. Um, and then that traffic does circulate through the Title Wave's, um, site and then exit out here. Uh, so it will be signed and the drive aisles will be wide enough to meet the two-way traffic, and then neck down to the, um, the exit for Title Wave exclusively.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chair.
Yep, you're welcome. Any other commission, uh, questions from the commissioners for staff? All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. Uh, if the applicant would like to make a presentation, uh, you'll need to be sworn in and then state your name and address.
Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this case will be the truth. I'll be God.
Yes.
Name your name and address.
Henry Hopkins, six three three five Marquita Avenue, Dallas, Texas, seven five two one four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hopkins, anything else, uh, anything additionally you'd like to present or add to the, uh, comments that staff provided?
Um, thank you for, thank you for presenting, Matt. I, I do not have any additional comments. Happy to answer any questions from the staff.
Very good. Uh, any questions for the applicant by the commissioners?
Commissioner Cradoff requests to speak.
Yes, Commissioner Cradoff.
I have several questions for the applicant. Uh, are you affiliated with, uh, the Title Wave Car Wash by any chance?
We are not affiliated with the Title Wave Car Wash.
I see. On the average, how, how, how long does it take to, uh, do an oil change? And then how many service techs will you have onboard, uh, your facility?
Our average oil change across the system, which includes about approximately five hundred and fifty locations throughout the country, country is, um, a little under nine minutes. And we will have anywhere between three to five service techs performing those, um, oil changes at any time.
I understand. I, I know there's a similar, uh, business, uh, here in Blue Springs that does the same thing, and I've, I've seen them on, on rainy days where people had to work, wait outside, but I'm sure that you have, uh, you make, your customers have appointments and, and you have repeated customers as well.
That is correct. We do not, we do not accept any appointments. It's, um, first come, first served, and the, um, customers do not leave their car at any point during the, um, the service that we provide.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant by the commissioners? All right, thank you, Mr. Hopkins. At this time, uh, yep, you're welcome. Uh, at this time, I'd ask for if there's any witnesses in favor of this application? Hearing none, I would ask for if there's witnesses in opposition to this application? Okay, any other final questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion for the rezoning. Mr. Graham?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Sanderson. I would move to recommend approval of the take five oil change rezoning R Z dash oh three dash two one dash seven six nine four.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Have motion, and I'll next recognize Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, I second that motion.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Mitchell Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Sorry, Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Uh, Chair Sanderson?
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. The rezoning will be heard by the city council at their Monday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting at six P M. Now ask for a motion on the conditional use permit. Uh, Commissioner Phillips?
This is Commissioner Phillips. I move for approval of the conditional use permit, C U P zero three two one seven eight. I'm sorry, seven six nine three. I believe you said there were two staff conditions.
Correct. Thank you. I have motion from Commissioner Phillips. Next, uh, recognize Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Tom Rohr?
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Chair Sanderson?
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously.
All right, uh, conditional use permit will be heard by the city council at their Monday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting at six P M. And I would now ask for a motion on the site plan design review. Commissioner Banks?
Oh, thank you, Mister Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan design review, S P D R dash zero three dash two one dash seven six nine five with the four staff conditions.
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion, and I would next recognize Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, I second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Cradoff?
Commissioner Cradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Commissioner Honeycutt, aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Commissioner Phillips, aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Graham, aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
And Chair Sanderson?
Chair Sanderson, aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously.
All right, uh, that's all testimony to be heard on those items. If you'd like to leave the meeting, please do so now. Thank you. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is item nine, master alternative sign plan for Amazon D C M four delivery center. And Mr. Wright, looks like you're presenting.
Yep, thank you, Chair Sanderson and Commissioners. Before this evening is a request for a master sign plan for Amazon's D C M four delivery center at twenty-four hundred northeast Coronado Drive. Uh, the subject property is owned L I Light Industrial and is located at the site of the former Halvex facility, um, northeast of the Adams Point Golf Course. Um, the perfect, uh, the purpose of the request is to allow ground-mounted signage that does not meet cer, meet certain sign standards, um, which impact five ground-mounted signs, which are highlighted on the screen. Uh, the first request is to reduce the minimum ten-foot front setback for a monument sign, um, to three feet, which would allow, um, two monument signs to be located closer to the street frontage than what is currently allowed by code. Um, that would be for the monument sign here, um, at the, um, easternmost point of the site, um, near the entrance with the old portion of already mised road, which is not, um, currently, um, utilized, um, it, it, it doesn't go anywhere back at backs and dead ends of the golf course. Um, and then another location up here at the, um, second entrance on, um, Coronado Drive, which will be the primary entrance for employees and other visitors, um, to the site. The second request is, um, and actually, this is also what the monument sign will look like. Um, the monument sign does meet all the other height and area requirements, um, for a monument sign, including the base. And the three-foot setback will allow a, a full three-foot landscape buffer to be installed around that, um, while not encroaching into the right-of-way. Uh, the second request is for, um, three vehicle entrance signs, which are proposed to be increased, um, in height and sign area. Um, currently, under the new sign code, uh, vehicle entrance signs cannot exceed, um, six square feet, and they are proposing, uh, the sign to be thirty square feet, uh, roughly five by six, um, in sign area. And then increase the height from three feet to seven feet. Um, this addition, um, the, the main purpose, uh, for the sign code changes is, is given the location and the nature of the business. Um, this would allow the site to be more, um, easily visible, um, for commercial vehicles that may be, um, that are traveling from facility to facility, who may not be familiar with, um, all of the access drives, especially, um, after dark, which is when, uh, particularly the truck traffic, uh, will be, uh, when the deliveries for the, the larger trucks will be made. Um, that way, they do not happen to miss the site, um, because if they do miss the site, the, the nearest place for them to turn around would be, um, further to the east, um, towards residential areas. So ideally, they would, would, um, have signage that is clearly visible, um, for truck traffic, as well as, um, van traffic that may be, um, entering the site as well. Um, additional building and ground-mounted signage, um, has also been received and permitted. Um, all of those, all of that signage does meet the sign code. Um, so therefore, these five, um, ground-mounted signs out along Coronado Drive are the only signs that will need, uh, master sign plan approval. Um, and staff does recommend approval of them with one condition, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Any questions for staff by the commissioners? Okay. Uh, hearing none, is there, uh, any, uh, anything from the applicant that they'd like to add at this time? All right, any other final questions by the commissioners? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for, oh, Commissioner Peel?
Hello, thank you, Chair. Um, you know, I had some reservations with the, the sign, signage size to begin with, and also moving it closer, especially to seventy highway. I'm not sure that that, uh, change in distance to the three-foot, um, would be necessary just because these signs are just gigantic as, as far as I'm concerned. So was there a reason to move them closer? Are they saying just because of the location of the property? Or is there some other reason?
Um, the, the main reason is just to make the signage more visible to assist commercial vehicles with locating to assist commercial vehicles with locating the site and making sure that they do not miss the access drives, um, for the facility.
Okay, just seems to be excessive, especially since so much that traffic is gonna be known to the drivers that are gonna be driving there. So, um, I don't know. Anyway, uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you, uh, Mr. Wright.
Uh, Commissioner Banks?
Chair, uh, to answer Mr. Peel's concern, I grew up with a trucking family. And if you're in a semi and you're not familiar with the area, the higher the sign, the bigger the sign, the better. Because they sit up so high, it can't be a normal, even a van, uh, you really need to be able to see it from a distance. And if it's too low, you can't. So I could appreciate them wanting the higher sign, so, or closer to the street.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay, uh, then I would entertain a motion for the master sign plan. Commissioner Banks?
Here, I'd like to make a motion to approve the master alternative sign plan, A S P dash zero-three-dash-two-one-dash-seven-six-nine-seven, uh, for Amazon DCM four delivery center. I believe there was one staff condition.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. We have a motion. I'll now recognize Commissioner Honeycutt.
Commissioner Honeycutt, I second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Billups?
Commissioner Billups, aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, nay.
Commissioner Graham? Oh, I'm sorry.
The signs are too large, and we don't really need to put them three feet from the roadway.
Did everybody get that? I'm sorry.
Do I need to repeat?
Yes, if you don't mind, please.
Okay, the reason for my nay is because the size of the signs that are requested, and also that I don't believe that they need to be replaced three feet from the roadway.
Thank you. Okay, um, planning commissioner Travis Graham?
Commissioner, aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Commissioner Rohr, aye.
Commissioner Kradoff?
Commissioner Kradoff, aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Commissioner, aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Commissioner Banks, aye.
Chair Sandersen?
Chair Sandersen, aye.
Okay, that motion is approved. Vote of seven to one.
All right, thank you. Uh, this is all the testimony to be heard on this item. So if you'd like to leave the meeting, please do so now. Thank you. All right, uh, we are on to other business. Mr. Wright?
Yes, um, thank you, Commissioners. Um, wanted to first, um, for those of you who may have missed it before the meeting started, um, council member and mayor pro tem, um, council member Kayler has, this will be his last meeting. Uh, so you definitely want to thank him for his service as both, uh, the planning commission liaison for the city council, as well as his service as mayor pro tem.
Thank you. Matt, can, is there, if I say a few words there?
Sure.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, and the commissioners and staff, I just wanted to convey a word, uh, it's been my pleasure to have been your liaison from the city, uh, council this past ten months. Um, you all have had to learn a new way of doing business like the rest of us, and, uh, you've, uh, come a long ways to adapt. And, uh, I want to just thank you all for the time you take out of your lives, uh, to volunteer to be on this commission. Keep up the good, good work, and, uh, I appreciate all that you do. Thank you again. And a special thanks to Karen for always keeping me out of trouble and keeping me updated. Karen, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Councilman Kayler. Appreciate the words.
Yes, thank you. And we do have, um, a meeting scheduled for Monday, April twenty-sixth, and we do have some items for that agenda. Um, so we hope to see everyone, um, back, um, in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. Uh, Commissioner Honeycutt, did you have other business as well?
No, I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Kayler for everything he's done and being here, uh, with us and going through the process. So thank you so much, Chair. Thank you, sir.
Does any of the other commissioners have other business? All right, hearing none, then I would ask for a motion for, uh, to adjourn. Commissioner Peel?
Commissioner Mitchell Peel, so moved, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Honeycutt?
I will second that motion.
All right, thank you. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we are adjourned. Uh, please immediately hang up by clicking the red phone icon. Thank you, and happy evening.
Thanks, Chair.
Good night.
Good night. It's been a pleasure.